Good morning Commissioners, welcome to the workshop of the Orlando City Council. Today's workshop is the third in a series where we are focusing on Sun Rail and Limo and Transit. Couple of weeks ago, I guess it's been three weeks since we've had council meeting. Noranne was here with Tony and they updated us on the Sun Rail project. So Christine is going to take us through a presentation on transit-oriented development surrounding these stations located within the boundaries of the city of Orlando. And Christine, why don't you come on up? And while you're doing that, I want to welcome Commissioner Gray to his first workshop of the Orlando City Council.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you Mayor. The purpose of today's presentation is drilling down a little bit on the stations within the city of Orlando, but putting it into context of the whole 61 Mile system. When we talk about transit-oriented development, it might be, what are you talking about here? And for us, it's about being transit-ready. And I think that the city of Orlando, through the leadership of city council, for the last two to three decades, has really set the city of Orlando up and the success of our four stations in the most amazing way. Ideally, transit-oriented development seeks to align our transit investment with the investment and the development adjacent to that. And it's often characterized by mixes of uses, intensity of development, as well as being very pedestrian-friendly. So we'll talk about that throughout the course of this presentation. But most importantly, it's important to realize that we are transit-ready here in the city of Orlando. Noranne talked, here we go, three weeks ago about the 61 Mile system and talked about the headways. That means the train's coming every 30 minutes. That's the way the system is designed, starting day. But FDOT has taken that design one step further. And there is the capacity there to handle trains 15 minutes, every 15 minutes coming through, which is really far in excess of a typical commuter rail project. It's almost light rail light, almost. And so we can see that the possibility of the impact of the land adjacent to that is far greater when you have a train coming by every 15 minutes. There are 17 stations along the 61 Mile corridor, and you can see a tremendous amount of opportunity for development along that route. Another thing Noranne did not mention when she was here, and that is the reconstruction of I-4. It is likely, Sun Rail will open first quarter of 2014, and they're going through industry review this summer, and will likely start construction within six to 12 months of Sun Rail opening. So getting people to work or places of businesses that want to be incredibly vital may look to also relocate adjacent to Sun Rail, knowing that that will be a, someone will have very much a reliable commute time and be able to get to work every single day, as well as other places of recreation. So I heard so much about partnerships and collaboration last Friday. And I think no area for transportation is more true than the Sun Rail project. FDOT has been an incredible partner on this. I have left in front of you, each of you, this transit-oriented sketchbook. This TOD sketchbook was designed by the Florida Department of Transportation in collaboration with each and every one of the local governments adjacent in the 61 Mile corridor. But what's great about this sketchbook is that it's divided in three sections. It kind of gives you an overview of what TOD is. It gives you the art of the possible with looking at each and every one of the possible station, and then looks at topographies, what is typical, what could happen along each of the 61 Mile corridor stations, some being suburban development. We have downtown development, there's urban core, urban development. So it's been an excellent tool for each and every one of us to use, because, you know, pictures really can say a thousand words. In addition to the sketchbook, which oh by the way, is available at sunrail.com if anybody wants to pull it up from the audience, they were also quite visionary, DOT and the Sun Rail team, from day one in implementing Sun Rail. From parking, the city of Orlando, our four stations, we do not have public parking associated with our project and our four stations, but it does exist along all the other, with the exception of a couple of stations. And what they're saying is, we're going to right-size the parking, but we're also going to offer up air rights. If a developer wants to come in and hold us harmless with the number of parking spots, say in Longwood, then the developer can have air rights to do so much more in the way of transit-oriented development. The least successful transit systems out there are those that have just a sea of parking adjacent to a station. Now if you have parking with retail and office adjacent to it, you get a much more enhanced experience. In addition to other resources that DOT has provided on this has been the industry forum, held the same afternoon that Noranne addressed the city council on May 14. And they brought in folks and then partnered with the Urban Land Institute to look at the art of the possible, what's happening in other areas here in the United States, here in Florida, and also across the world when it comes to development. They've also enlisted eight ECOMs, we know them as Gladding Jackson, who have done excellent job in land development and depicting what that could be. They have them on staff to help the local governments as we go through this process. Now I'm proud to say that the city of Orlando is probably far more advanced than some of the other cities when it comes to this, because we've been working on it for so long. But the cities like Longwood, as they've developed their master plan, or even DeBury, as now they have a station that has a parking lot, and they're looking at, almost taking farmland to more urban, suburban-style development. Eight ECOMs is there to help each and every one of us. And then they're also looking to help five local governments with an implementation plan, kind of drilling down and looking in more detail of what can occur. And we'll talk about that when we get to the Orlando Health Station. So you can see that we've had quite a bit of media attention on Sun Rail in particular. These are just some recent articles that I've pulled in preparation for this presentation. But transit-oriented development is more like a public-private partnership. The city of Orlando can create an environment that's quite hospitable, but we also know that it takes, you know, financing to make these projects work. And you can see that there's quite a bit of interest here within our 61 Mile corridor. One of the articles you see here, "Proposal Offers Ways to Help Sun Rail Operating Bill." That was an article having to do with the federal reauthorization bill that is deadline at the end of this month, but we've had many deadlines on this reauthorization bill. It's a little overdue. But it looks at opportunities within the nation at the federal level to offer tax credits to businesses that choose to locate adjacent to transit, as well as looking at ways to offset some of those operating costs. So we'll keep you informed on how that progresses as we move through this month, but I'll say that Congressman Mike has been relatively supportive of many of these initiatives. So why do we care so much about some of this? And why does the development community care about this? And you'll see that I've provided some information about what has happened to some of the development that's adjacent to other types of fixed guideway transit in the nation. You see a true uptick in the return on their investment. Now I've talked to some developers, and locally, we might see in the current economic conditions, more like a 10% increase in real estate value, particularly in rents and so forth. But it's encouraging nonetheless. There's that side of it. That's the business side, that's the developer side. But from the public sector benefit, it's the increase in ridership. The more hospitable each and every one of these stations are to potential riders, the more robust our system can become. In New York, the ridership rose 24% in New Rochelle after they did some TOD development in 1991. So it's almost like a new urbanism type of development pattern. And in Yonkers, ridership rose 40% when they revamped the Getty Square. But what we found in Portland, for example, you know, downtown Portland, very robust from a transit standpoint, as they tried to move out to the suburbs, what they saw was a benefit of the success of downtown TODs, because that was able to spawn more positive development. And once again, it gets back to the lenders ultimately, and what they see as a successful project. So within the sketchbook itself, it lays out some principles to follow. And I can say unequivocally, the city of Orlando has done a phenomenal job in setting us up for success in each and every one of these categories. We've removed barriers for higher density, we mix uses all along. The picture in the upper left-hand corner is actually Thornton Park. I mean, mixed use, it's transit-ready. Before transit even has a design program, unless of course, you look at our limo expansion program. The center picture you see is Creative Village, and you see the densities coming up out of the ground there. So we've definitely broken down the barriers, we're mixing our uses, we're looking at our pedestrian orientation. We know that it's pretty easy to get people to walk a quarter mile, five minutes or so to a station. But what if they're walking 10 minutes to the station? Well then, you want it to be as hospitable of an environment as possible. And we'll talk about each and every one of our stations and how designs are being done by the private sector to make so much of that work. We're limiting parking, we don't have parking in each of ours, but we're also, in downtown in particular, you don't see parking, the seas of parking, because we want to be far more pedestrian-oriented. And when it comes to public leadership on transit-oriented development, there's not a community that's done it longer than us, right here in central Florida. As a matter of fact, I talked to Kevin Tieske about this the other day, and we were talking about the growth management plan that was adopted in 1991, a year before this building was dedicated. And what it says is that the city of Orlando will take a leadership role in implementing multimodal transportation opportunities, and in developing a land-use pattern that will allow for a balanced transportation system. I mean, these words created the foundation of so much that we've done over the last two decades. But we can't do it in isolation of the rest of the system. So here's phase one. What does the transit-oriented development of the region look like? Where do the stations fit in? DeBury, kind of sea of parking, more of a suburban development. But when you start breaking down station by station, if you look at Longwood, for example, they're looking to provide elderly residential complex associated with their development. Now we know that from an urban design standpoint, if people retire in an area, if they're within an hour of an international airport, university system, places like the Performing Arts Center, makes it a desirable place for them to live. So here it is, in Longwood, there's, adjacent to the station, will be some elderly housing. But they're also looking at providing some education opportunities there as well, getting involved with one of the campuses to provide for continuing education. So that's Longwood. Winter Park, I mean, if you talk about a sense of place, I mean, that's transit-oriented development 100 years and beyond. And so when we ask people to envision, what does TOD look like? What does transit-oriented development look like? It's a mix of uses, it's higher densities, it's open spaces, it's an inviting environment. And we're well on our way of creating that as well in the city of Orlando. So let's talk about our four stations. Florida Hospital, Link Central Station, Church Street, and Orlando Health, Amtrak. Florida Hospital and Orlando Health are considered more of our urban centers, and we know that the two downtown stations are just that. But all of this is complemented by the links, by our limo system. Now we have an existing limo system, but we're tripling the size of our limo expansion over the next year and a half to coordinate with the opening of Sun Rail. So we're expanding the reaches of the Sun Rail system into our communities, both east-west and connecting the two stations in the downtown north-south. So here's Florida Hospital Station, it's the one furthest to the north. And as I was sitting here waiting for today's workshop, I saw Lars Holman on one of the loops running. And at the signing of the full funding grant agreement, he's saying that Orlando Health is creating a healthier community. I can't imagine anything more important than doing that, than addressing some of our transportation needs. So Sun Rail actually is quite an assistant to that healthy community. We look at transit-oriented, we talked about jobs during Sun Rail and trying to get it approved and so forth, and many of the jobs can't come out of the transit-oriented development. You know, Sun Rail has a certain amount of jobs associated with it, but so much is about the adjacent development. This has, this station has a future Sun, limo connection. I've drawn a red circle, that's about, that's a quarter-mile walk, so that's a five-minute walk for folks, very easy to do. But you also see an increase in tree-lined streets, once again, increasing the walkability of the area. And Florida Hospital, part of their master plan was, Sun Rail was their transportation mitigation, or they could have helped fund the improvements to I-4. We're so happy they chose Sun Rail instead. So they're looking at tighter parking ratios there as well. And recently, in the last year, we went out to Utah and looked at their transit systems there. And what we found at the University of Utah is that they used to have overcrowding with parking and spilling into the neighborhoods, and a little bit of friction between the university and the adjacent neighborhoods. After they opened their track system, they saw that about 30% of university employees, as well as students, started taking that, which not only alleviated kind of that friction with the neighborhood, because there wasn't that demand for parking, but they reduced their demand on parking so much that they converted some of their surface lots to educational facilities, which is truly the economic impact that we want out of Sun Rail. Florida Hospital is doing so much on their master plan as well. You can see all the growth that's occurring there, the mix of use with the increase in retail, the multifamily units that Craig Ustler has already announced, that's workforce housing. We know that they're going to grow to almost 20,000 employees. Not everyone's going to choose to commute by Sun Rail, not everyone's going to choose to live in College Park, unfortunately, it's a great place to live. But they may want to live in these multifamily units as well. So creating more and more options for people as we move forward. But is Florida Hospital Station's not just about Florida Hospital? We have many recreational and cultural uses nearby. I've thought about how families may be staying, associated with Orlando Health, maybe they have a sick child, and they have another child with them though, and the ability to take Sun Rail up and go to the Science Center for the day, and just connecting our centers all together. Once again, key to this expansion into that community is how inviting the pedestrian environment is. Florida Hospital Station's adjacent to College Park, we know that as well, and so we're making sure as we move forward with the I-4 master plan, that the through fares for pedestrians is as inviting as possible to make that desirable. And then we also have Ivanhoe Village, kind of one of the most traditional types of our retail streets around. Our next stop is at Link Central Station, and to orient you, right across the middle of the screen is I-4, and then you see the wavy top building, that's Link Central Station. And the background is Creative Village, and the foreground is Rita Development, and I'll talk about each and every one of those. Link Central Station, obviously, is our multimodal station in downtown Orlando, and they have, Link's has seen record ridership over the last couple of years. You know, 28 million riders just last year. It's pretty phenomenal, and half of the buses go through this station every single day. And it's also kind of the core of our limo stop, and that's where most of the limo expansion will kind of come out of as well. And at the last board meeting, they also approved private providers to be able to use Link Central Station. That's that Red Coach Transit that gets you first-class bus service down to Miami, or Gainesville, Atlanta. So we're seeing pulsing in and pulsing out of a variety of uses there as well. And this is also designed to be a stop for any future interstate rail, like a higher-speed rail, kind of Amtrak, more expanded type of thing. So it's truly intermodal in nature. So if you're looking at Link Central Station, you look to the east towards the courthouse. Rita Development has been, they've owned that old Pazootie property, the 400 North Orange, for quite a few years now. And I've lived in the central Florida area for almost two decades, and I'm so ready for something to happen on that site, as I'm sure many of you are. So this, over five-acre development, they're ready with their phase-one development, which includes residential, some hotel and ground-floor retail. But what was interesting is, when we talked to Rita Development five years ago, they didn't know anything about Sun Rail. But they were very open to the idea of opening their development, so they have a front door to Sun Rail, as well as a front door to Orange Avenue. So they reoriented their phasing and their construction to see the benefit of Sun Rail to their system. Now FDOT, Links and the city of Orlando have been working with them on how do you incorporate the open space of Gertrude's Walk, and so that it's an enhancement to their development as well. Their phase-two development's not yet been announced or defined, but they're looking at some office park-type stuff. We have to remember that along the 61 Mile corridor, there's limited resources to be able to do what we need done from a transit-oriented development, but that it's a 20-year program over time. And one of the developers that attended the workshop that DOT hosted the forum, said it's a lot easier and sometimes more feasible to do four or five $20 to $25 million projects than $100 million project, which makes a whole lot of sense. Now if we take, kind of pivot around and look west from Link Central Station, there you have where the Creative Village will come up out of the ground, and you see almost a million square feet of office, over a half-million square feet of education, hotel rooms, mixed-income residential as well. The vision of the Creative Village is much of Lake Nona, and the impact that it's had on our economic landscape in central Florida, they're anchored by education, technology, wellness, and sustainability. Once again, a lot of the tenants, that really reinforces the importance of Sun Rail. And I think no other area will we see the ability to work, live, play, and learn than right there at the Creative Village, and the opportunities associated with that. So let's go down further south to Church Street Station, that is the third of our four stations. You see a very large building, kind of in the right section of this. We're always looking at opportunities, what can happen to that parking lot that's adjacent to the Cheyenne Saloon and the Church Street Station? It has so much in the way of opportunity, but there are also some limitations associated with that site due to the ultimate I-4 development. But the good news about this station, Church Street Station, is that we are so highly-developed around that station. But we need to be mindful that this is a critical gateway into the city for those who may not choose to use Sun Rail. It's interesting, when they did the modeling of all the ridership, Church Street Station has the highest estimated ridership along the 61 Mile corridor because of so much of what the city has done in the past. We have 18,000 residents, which is pretty amazing for a downtown area here in the south, as well as a high number of employees, very close in walking distance, not only the use of existing limo, but the limo expansion program as well. So here again is our quarter-mile circle, a five-minute walk to places, easy to get to the Amway Center, DPAC, CNL, OPD, Signature Plaza. And then we also know that the Orlando Magic has come in, and they're working on a feasibility study of what does some redevelopment look like just west of I-4, and the benefit of maybe having their headquarters nearby, additional hotel space, et cetera. So so much of this will evolve, and I'm sure none of it would be occurring if not for the promise of Sun Rail coming soon. So our final station is that of Orlando Health and Amtrak Station. As you look at the aerial of this, you see a lot more green space, kind of once again, a sense of place. One of the articles I showed you early on was the purchasing by Orlando Health for two retail sites. And they're, I don't know if you can see, but it's kind of right where the two buildings kind of create an enclave right there. Very close in the foreground, that is the Amtrak Station. Nothing is happening to change the Amtrak Station itself. Florida Department of Transportation owns that building now, it was part of the 61 Mile corridor purchase. Sun Rail will be just a little bit north of that, will share some uses there, but we're really not touching or impacting that station, but we know that it's a jewel for the city of Orlando, and we will work to make sure that it is brought back to its original splendor. Here you see an emphasis on open space, the ability to kind of walk through, get to the Heart Hospital, and so much has been done on their master plan to accommodate Sun Rail and to enhance the experience there. Although Orlando Health is definitely the anchor of this station, it's not the only development occurring down there, and we'll talk about that in a minute. They're orienting everything for a Sun Rail station, they're looking at the expansion of their emergency room is underway, building a new tower, and look at their projections in the future, 19,000 employees. One of the benefits and why the hospitals were so supportive of Sun Rail all the way through the process was, Sun Rail allows them to kind of expand the geography in which they're looking for employees. But also, Orlando Health has a hospital up near Longwood, not far from the Longwood Station, and off the Sand Lake Road, which they may look to begin to share resources, utilizing Sun Rail for some of this. So the Amtrak Station, we've talked about the hospital itself, but looking at this graphic, you see that the hospital makes up about 25% of the development. It's what we know most about the development around the station, and we so appreciate the work that Orlando Health has already done. A lot of people don't realize that our Amtrak Station's one of the busiest Amtrak stations in the southeast, 180,000 annual passengers coming in and out of there. We have future connection opportunities for limo down there. Orlando Health is guaranteed to keep a circulator system going around their campus as well in the interim, so we're excited about that. Orlando Health is updating their DRI, and they're including standards for streets, landscaping, and building placement in particular. And then when I mentioned that DOT is looking at some development implementation plans, they came to the city and said, we're here to help, how can we help? And since we know so much about what's going on around Orlando Health, the rest of that area is probably the area most in transition through any of our four stations. And so we're going to start drilling down a little bit more on what is the art of the possible around those stations. Keep in mind, you know, we used to have a whole lot more freight going through here, and you used to, off of Gore, have access to I-4. So much of that has transitioned, that is it less hospitable maybe for industrial to be there? Is there a better use for some of that land? So we're going through that process. But the city has done a lot in advance to prepare for kind of what that could look like through this South Downtown Vision Plan. Those 550 acres south of the 408, the East-West Expressway, and east of I-4, the city planning department and economic development really started looking at, what can we do in this area? And so they created new opportunities along there, the number of dwelling units, up to 40 dwelling units in the industrial area just west of the tracks, but much higher density east of the tracks, an eighth of the mile from the train station, very high density, a quarter mile stepping out a little bit more. But what does that look like? I mean, to look at these numbers, I took the opportunity to pull some graphics that I think might better reflect what that intensity and density looks like. These are from Minneapolis, I believe. But you can see that you don't have overwhelming high intensity, you just have very usable density and intensity for some of these uses. Each and every one of these have an example of mixed use on the first floor, it could be office, it could be residential as well. But know that city staff has been working on that through your leadership, as I think two years ago, they adopted some of these, but have been working on these policies for about five years now. So that gets us through kind of what's happening. We have a lot of interest in central Florida, particularly in the city of Orlando, for transit-oriented development. And I think it is because we've set the stage for success for And I think it is because we've set the stage for success for this in such a great way, both through our growth management plan. But I truly believe that the success of Sun Rail has come out of a much larger vision process that this community has gone through in how shall we grow? We said we're going to put these densities and intensities in certain corridors. Sun Rail, the 61 mile corridor, will accept those densities. And so, you know, we've had a regional vision, we have local resolve to get these things done. And keeping in mind that the densities that we're looking at just increases ultimately the ridership and the use of Sun Rail. So with that, I'm finished with my presentation and we'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Christine. Questions or comments? Well, we have a new board up here, so let me see if I can operate this in new pictures. Commissioner Stewart.
Christine, thank you very much and thank you for your leadership. It's been great to see these four come together. And the best part is it's great to see a plan come together. When we talked about four or five years ago about Links beginning to move towards a spine in anticipation of what could happen with Sun Rail. It was before Sun Rail had run into some of those difficulties. But the idea of having those two come together and begin to see that now, and then of course the Links, I appreciate your leadership and Mayor appreciate your leadership and the same thing. I'd love to make sure that we're kind of reviewing this about every six months because there's some neat opportunities that we have as we work with our constituents. I've got Florida Hospital and of course Commissioner Lionel and Commissioner Sheehan have got some unique contacts in there to make sure that we're promoting this as part of what we're trying to accomplish in the downtown corridor. The quarter mile walk, I'm curious as when you begin to start looking in the comparison of other Sun Belt areas, is quarter mile really feasible or is that the minimum amount? And I know that the weather issue in the Sun Belt, especially in terms of us or Phoenix or someplace else, does that really have much of a bearing or is that quarter mile minimum compared to what an urban area like Midwest and North would be at half a mile?
I would argue that actually in Orlando, we may have more inviting weather throughout the course of the year versus something that would deter someone from using it, with the exception of afternoon thunderstorms and lightning and so forth. But there are some enhancements that are being done, particularly at Florida Hospital. They expanded the length of their stations to provide more covering for folks. I think with our tree canopy and wider sidewalks, it's incredibly inviting. And I would say that a quarter mile is pretty much the minimum that people will walk if they can. And then once again, we have our limo expansion programs also to increase the footprint of that accessibility.
Well, I'm really excited about seeing the multimodal system downtown and what it can become. That's the most fun. And then seeing the development of the Pazooti property, because we just, we know there's so much potential right there.
Well, and Rita really wanted to expand on that. And they're calling their development at Central Station. So they have embraced the transit oriented development component of this.
We have the new steel house that's getting ready to go in. That's going to be also some of that housing and then of course one across the street. And it's just, it just seems that we've done a really good job and I appreciate your leadership in terms of getting poised for the next, for the next stage of this. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. You know, on the walkability, I think it's more mindset than it actually is the environment related to it. Commissioner Sheehan?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that great presentation. I just had a couple of things. I'm really glad to see that FDOT is being sensitive to the historic station because I think that is really a gem and that a lot of people don't even know about it, but it's one of the most beautiful buildings I think that we have left and we really need to keep that, to restore it and make it, return it to its splendor. Like you said, I think that's a great idea and it can be so much more of an amenity than it already is. Something on the higher densities around the rail stops, I think that's great as we've seen some of the new development happening throughout downtown land. I think there's this one thing we need to be careful about is service bays and different things like that, because if we're going to have the garbage cans going in at four o'clock in the morning, we're going to wake up 200 or 300 people.
That's right.
And then I get to hear about it. So again, we have to make sure that we're dealing with those quality of life issues as we do the higher densities to make sure that people could sleep, that we're not doing service things at night that are going to, you know, rattle them and wake them up and all those kinds of things. And, you know, it's part of living in an urban environment, but again, you know, they need to, we need to make sure that there's some quality of life there for folks. You know, serving on the Eastern or Florida Regional Planning Council, I'm glad we've had regional collaboration on the Sun Rail stops. I think it's been great working and getting the HUD Sustainability Grant for Transit Oriented Design through downtown. I think that's important as we, you know, as we move forward and making sure that we do the right kind of transit oriented development to spur economic development. And I'll take the heat over the snow any day when it comes to weather. I mean, if any of y'all have ever lived up north, it is not fun to be slipping and sliding through the ice and catching the bus in the snow and all that kind of stuff. So I'll take a little bit of sweat any day. But, and I do think as we actually develop and put higher densities in and things like that, I mean, I went to Baldwin Park last night, Commissioner, and it was really, really hot until I actually hit the center core, that I had to park and walk. It was really hot until I got to that central core and then it was 20 degrees cooler as those buildings cast that shade. So I think that we can help create that environment and I think that's important to do. So thank you for your hard work. Thank you as we move forward. I think we're going to do a great job and really shine as we move forward on this. So thank you.
Commissioner Lionel.
Thank you, Mayor. And Christine, look, a couple of items. I think the Active Living Council will take exception to that one-fourth mile walk. I think they want us to walk a little further.
I hear you.
I don't know, but when you say that's about average, it's like, well, let's get out there and walk, as long as our sidewalks are in good shape. On agenda item today, C-15, I know we have the agreement, but my observation would be regarding the jobs and whether Gennaro is still engaged in that. And that we have posted a timeline, whether it's through his office or somewhere, as all of these things are moving forward, it's good to have our vision out there and have people able to go to it, to a website, but have some indicators of when certain things may or may not kick off, or where we are. I really like looking structurally at this is in municipal planning or this is in whatever committee, are jobs available here and there and who's going to be responsible for them? I know Senator Siplin just had a workshop, the workshop to get these days, last week, a week before last, and over 400 people showed up for the same thing they're dying, I had, and I think you were there.
Yes.
I mean, we've had 100 of these things, it seems, but people are still searching for the opportunities. So I would like to see us look at all the stations, make sure those opportunities that we're working with these people to be engaged in the jobs as they unfold, whether it's through FDOT or whoever the private contractors are. That to me would be the reality of all these visions is real employment. So I'd like every time we talk, we have that posting of jobs and to talk about the timeline is real good. And if Gennaro can get it posted and really become more engaged in how all of this is happening, to so when people come, say, "Well, you've been talking about these jobs." He said, "Well, that's not going to happen for another 12 months." Or so that people are not getting angry with us for something that's out of our control. So that part is real important. And I noticed we were still talking about the Pazooti property, but I had an appointment the other day, well, the Rita property, with someone regarding a project that we've been talking about for probably 20 years. I'm going to talk to Dean today, I hope. Is the World Trade Center going to go anywhere? It's been coming around here for like 20 years. I've been here 15. And I remember when, where the arena is now, the event center, Betty Wyman was sitting there every day and says she's going to put the World Trade Center over there. So now I hear another plan. So is that a reality, somebody? Or is that, okay, Dean, there you are. I left you a message. Can we get together like, oh, we can do it, just a few minutes to see whether we can incorporate that if it's real?
You will be guaranteed that any development coming through, we will make sure in the planning.
Well, it's so close to the rail that we need to make sure there is some massaging of it and there is some compatibility or it's a part of our vision. And if it's not real, then you leave it off. But if it's real and it's moving through the system, it just makes sense because it's another possible high-rise or some construction, that means jobs, it means change in the landscape. And we will call it the Betty Wyman Tower. I don't know about other people, but if you know Commissioner Wyman, she was, this was her buddy. So let's check on it and maybe next time we give a report, you can update us on that. Thank you.
Let's see, Commissioner Ortiz and then Commissioner Links.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Christine, for that great presentation. I just have a few questions. As the mayor was talking about walkability and accessibility, I'm thinking that all these great things are happening downtown and we have two major venues in the region, which is the airport and UCF. And I was thinking, I know that we have, we're going to have a direct connection with the Links buses. I was thinking, how fast will this Links buses will be able to transport people to UCF or the airport? And if we have any projections about any kind of connections in the future when it comes to the Sun Rail? I also know that from the airport to international drive is another concern. So I just, I know I'm probably jumping ahead of the curb here, but those are things that have come to my mind since I have District Two and we have District One also.
Right.
That are, even though we're kind of detached from the downtown area, but we're still attached by great venues, so.
Well, thank you, because it's important. We've always talked about Sun Rail as being our spine in the region. It's probably gotten so much attention because it took a while to get the final approval of that. But you know that we have other visions in this area for east-west connection. There's an alternatives analysis underway right now connecting the Convention Center Airport, Lake Nona, and that's being managed by the Florida Department of Transportation. We also know, and we're not promising anything here, that there's that East Coast Railroad that's looking at providing higher speed rail. And if they come to the airport by 2014, 2015, does that drive us getting to the airport that's much sooner with passenger rail? And then it's almost like some dominoes begin the fall. But in addition, there's also an alternatives analysis for the State Road 50 corridor that Links is initiating right now. And that's, we're going to be looking at a variety of modes of transportation. Is it bus rapid transit that becomes streetcar, that eventually becomes light rail? And it goes as far west as West Oaks Mall, connects to downtown and goes out to the university area with a major stop there at 436. So it's, there's a tremendous amount of conversation in this region about next steps. And I think the east-west connections are very critical to the ultimate success to all of these.
You mind, you mind just keeping me and probably Commissioner Gray now connected on that, updated on that, because I think we would like to get involved. And I'm probably speaking out of turn ahead of them, but I think we do, we will have a great interest in see how that develops and see how we can help also.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Christine, why don't you set up a briefing for Commissioner Ortiz and Commissioner Gray just on the alternatives analysis and what information we've been given related to the Florida East Coast proposal?
Be happy to.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the community would be delighted to hear about those news too, you know, I think. And as we have seen, they have really gotten involved lately. So thank you so much.
Commissioner Links?
Thank you, Mayor. Christine, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for your presentation, great presentation. And I know FJ is sitting back, he wishes he could be standing there with you and speaking to us. But you spoke of Amtrak Station and returning it to its original splendor. What are the plans for Amtrak Station?
Yeah, it's real important. We manage expectations here. The Amtrak Station is now owned by the Florida Department of Transportation as part of this. Right now, there are no specific plans to revitalize it. Actually, there are some short-term needs for that building, if you talk to Mike Rhodes. But the city has been working with FDOT and we're going to really work hard to make sure that we find the funding. We've assessed what some of the challenges are, because there's ADA compliance issues associated with that building. So much why Sun Rail is not directly connected to it, because of the responsibility to bring that building up to code. But nonetheless, we have, over the last two to three years, really begun to focus on how do we save that building and bring it back to its splendor? There's been no commitment to date where we've assessed what the challenges are, kind of what the cost associated with that would be. But keep in mind that that building was owned by CSX for so many years and Amtrak just leases space out of that. But it's one of the most popular rental car, little local rental car enterprises there. So we agree, there's things that need to be done and we're going to work hard to find the resources to work with DOT to bring that up and not lose that gem.
Okay. And you said the station is going to be north of the Amtrak Station, the Sun Rail Station?
Yeah, closer to Columbia Avenue. So it's kind of on that same super block in a way, but it's just a little bit north. But you would feel like you're arriving at the same place.
Okay. And then you spoke of parking in and around the stations, limited parking?
None.
And so that's what I was going to ask. What are, what are some of the plans for parking around the stations? And specifically, if there are any plans for parking to some degree, would this be public parking facilities or sites so that it is a revenue stream for the city of Orlando?
Well, most of the Sun Rail stations, they really identified which were destination stations and which were origin stations. Like where do you start the day versus where do you start in the day? And so our four stations were really viewed as where you end your commute in the morning. They're destination stations. So we have no public parking associated with Sun Rail, although there is ample public parking available for folks who do choose to use it, whether they are parking garages or surface lots, like on-street parking. We don't envision that many people will drive to the Sun Rail stations within the city of Orlando to take Sun Rail elsewhere. And so much of why we're doing the limo expansion, people can walk to the stations, take a bus or even ride a bike and take your bike onto the Sun Rail station, I mean, onto the Sun Rail car itself. So right now, we have no, no vision of creating any additional parking. And it would actually, you know, if you provided free parking at Sun Rail stations in downtown Orlando, that free parking would compete with the paid parking we have downtown. And so there's just no...
Yeah, no, I wasn't thinking of any free parking in downtown Orlando.
But we have ample parking available in the downtown area for people who, if they would choose to do that reverse commute.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think the way to say it is there's no dedicated parking to Sun Rail, but there's ample parking around any of the stations. Back to Commissioner Stewart.
One quick question, and Commissioner Sheehan reminded me of it. Where are we on the status of quiet zones?
Well, I'm so surprised you asked that question. Florida Hospital is investing in quiet zones. And let's, I know the question came up with Secretary Downs a few weeks ago. What needs to occur are safety improvements at intersections. And a lot of times, the result is what's called quad gates, meaning that gates go down on both sides, kind of four gates total. And so the city has looked at what is the expense of if you maximize all the investment, make the corridor as safe as possible? Because at the end of the day, you make, we make the investment and then we go to the Federal Railroad Administration and we show them what's been done. And by that, we then request a quiet zone by the Federal Railroad Administration, which keeps freight train operators from blowing their horn in the middle of the night, quality of life issue. And so, but there's, there's an exercise you can go through. You can say, these are the minimum number of improvements we can make and qualify for the quiet zone, but the engineer still has their discretion to pull the horn if they want or feel the need. And so we've gone through what is the least expensive options and then what is the full quad gate option available to us? So we've gone through that exercise. We've identified the costs associated with that. Florida Hospital is moving forward with theirs. And it's my understanding that they're working with the Sun Rail construction team to have them implement at the same time. The cost estimates that were worked up originally, it's more expensive than that. So staff is working very hard to find out what the right cost is, because before we come to you all with a plan on how to implement this, we want to make sure that we have a very... very good handle on the cost associated with it. We're talking to DOT, and it is likely that we get all that wrapped up, what it can get pulled into Phase II construction for Sun Rail, which will open 2015, 2016. Keeping in mind that so many of the signal improvements that are being done as part of Sun Rail really pays for and implements about 40% of the technology that's necessary. We need that added level of revenue to make sure that we get all the structural improvements done. But know that staff is working very closely with DOT and Federal Railroad Administration. We know that's a very high priority. I hear them every day as well. But it's a quality of life issue, and we talk about the higher densities, and it's hard to get those higher densities when people are awake three or four times during the night. And I think as residents, we get used to it. It's the guest that comes or stays in a hotel that, not quite ready for that horn to blow at 2:00 a.m.
Well, I got to tell you, I lived next door to a railroad track for about six months, and I moved. I never got used to that, so.
All right. Thank you, Christine. That was a great presentation, and council will try to bring this up every three, four months or so to make sure everybody's in the loop on what's happening with Sun Rail and the progression of development.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our workshop for today. Thank you for joining us in chambers, or on the world wide web, or by television, however you joined us.